My name's Mayor. And 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 my name's Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, August 16th Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please, Tom.
Council members McCorris.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Baranco. Cole.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
All right, with us this evening to give our invocation is the Reverend Dr. Christina O'Hara with Church of the Good Shepherd, so we welcome her at as you stand for our invocation, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance immediately to follow.
This is a prayer from Walter Bruegemann. You beyond our weary selves, you God, Lord, and sovereign, you God lover and partner, you are God of all our possibilities. You preside over all our comings and goings, all our wealth and all our poverty, all our sickness and all our health, all our despair and all our hope, all our living and all our dying, and we are grateful. You are God of all our impossibilities. You have presided over the emancipations and the healings of our mothers and fathers. You have presided over the wondrous transformations in our own lives. You have and will preside over those parts of our lives that we imagine to be closed, and we are grateful. So be your true self in acting the things impossible for us, that we might yet be whole among the blind who see and the dead who are raised, that we may yet witness your will for peace, your vision for justice, your vetoing all our killing fields. At the outset of this day, we place our lives in your strong hands. Before the end of this day, do newness among us in the very places where we are tired in fear, we are exhausted in guilt, we are spent in anxiety. Make all things new, we pray, in the new-making name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Reverend O'Hara for our invocation tonight. Move on to item four, is our consent agenda. Any changes to be made to that tonight?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr. Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Move ahead then to item thirty-three. It's our regular agenda. Look for a motion to approve that, please.
So moved. Sale.
Second, Nitzer.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Nitzer to approve the regular agenda. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass seven to zero. Just before we move on with our regular agenda, public input tonight will work like this for regular agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input will be limited to five minutes. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration at that time only. With that being said, we'll move on to item thirty-four.
Item thirty-four, new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Christina's Beauty Salon, 501 West Twenty-seventh Street, with conditional use permit, one-six-five-five-three-dash-twenty-twenty-two, being approved on July sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Item thirty-five, new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, thirteen, six, sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite 101, with conditional use permit, one-six-five-six-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-two, being approved on July sixth, twenty-twenty-two, pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item thirty-six, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, thirteen, sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite 101. Item thirty-seven, new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, thirteen point two-five, sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite 102, with conditional use permit, one-six-five-six-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-two, being approved on July sixth, twenty-twenty-two, pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item thirty-eight, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, thirteen point two-five, sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite 102. Item thirty-nine, new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, thirteen point five, sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite 103, with conditional use permit, one-six-five-six-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-two, being approved on July sixth, twenty-twenty-two, pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item forty, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, thirteen point five, sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite 103. Item forty-one, new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, thirteen point seven-five, sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite 104, with conditional use permit, one-six-five-six-nine-dash-twenty-twenty-two, being approved on July sixth, twenty-twenty-two, pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item forty-two, request to add video lottery terminals with the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Deuces Casino, thirteen point seven-five, sixty-ten South Cliff Avenue, Suite 104. Item forty-three, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for the Country Club of Sioux Falls to be operated, three oh five West Fifty-seventh Street, for a special event on September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Item forty-four, special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated, twenty-five-ten East Fifty-fourth Street North, for a banquet on August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Item forty-five, special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated, four-eighty East Sixty-ninth Street, for a reception on September third, twenty-twenty-two. Item forty-six, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated, fifty-nine-ten South Louise Avenue, for a special event on September third, twenty-twenty-two. And item forty-seven, special one-day liquor license for Sanford Health to be operated, thirty-one oh one West Twenty-second Street, course only, for a special event on September twelfth through eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
All right, thank you, Tom. Jamie, good evening.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I can answer any questions that you have on items thirty-four through forty-seven.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public here to speak on any items from thirty-four to forty-seven tonight? Counsel, you have any questions for Jamie on any of these? Counselor Starr.
Great. Jamie, show me a map of these four locations in the same building that we're going to put forty video lottery machines in one spot. Do we have a map or something that shows how this fits in the neighborhood that we put four casinos in one building?
I unfortunately do not have a map to show you that. It's not something I-
Is the applicant here to explain this? Doesn't look that way. Jason?
I don't have a specific map, Counselor, but this would be the northeast corner of Sixty-ninth and Cliff where Clint is doing that new development, the apartments, and then you're seeing some of those strip malls coming on the frontage. And I believe this one is on the west side of the property facing Cliff Avenue.
Thank you. Counselor Nitzer?
He answered my question. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Jamie tonight? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr.
I would move to defer items thirty-five through forty-one, forty-two, I'm sorry.
Second.
Let me get a date. That's okay, the second week in September, whatever the second meeting is.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you, till September thirteenth.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, to read that back, that's a motion to defer thirty-five to forty-two to the September thirteenth meeting by Starr, seconded by Nitzer. Any discussion on that? Counselor McCorris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steph, has there been any public feedback from neighbors or future neighbors? How have they been informed?
So as part of the application for on-sale alcohol, they did, were required to do a conditional use permit. There are some twin homes and single-family kind of to the northwest. I believe they held a public meeting with those neighbors, and then we didn't have any feedback at the public meeting or at the planning commission meeting on this request.
All right, other discussion on that motion? Go ahead, Counselor Nitzer.
Well, so historically, we've had one or two units, and then recently, we started to see three. There's one, for example, down near where I live, at Forty-first and Ellis, and now we're talking about four. I don't know how many units are in the strip mall, but you potentially could have an entire strip mall full of video lottery. And I think we need to slow down a little bit and decide as a community, based on the law, the, we have some limitations in terms of law, but suitable location is something we can, we can discuss. And I think, you know, we have to decide at what point are we going to say that it's no longer suitable? Is it forty, fifty, sixty? You know, a big box full of them? So I, you know, we're just getting bigger and bigger here, so I think we just need to, I, that's why I supported the motion. I think we just need to slow down and find out what power we have and think a little bit about how far we want to let this go, because once we set the precedent, it's hard to reel it back.
Other discussion on the motion to defer? Counselor Starr?
I'll stick to the deferring a little bit, but at some point, you know, we've, this is way outside of what the legislature intended by limiting ten machines per casino, and, you know, we would have never done this six years ago. We'd have never, and we've gone down a long path of slowly expanding, and you hear rumors yet of another one coming with five locations in one location and putting fifty machines. You go to North Sioux City, they allow this, you know, there's six or seven in one building. And so if we want to expand gambling, let's expand gambling rather than doing this piecemeal and requiring separate coolers and putting chain-linked fence to, to keep alcohol segregated. And we talk about safety of people who work this, and one of the reasons I want to defer is I want to hear how many employees are going to run these four places. We've gotten to the point where we allow an alcohol establishment to be run by, over security cameras and one person running two locations. Technically, one person could run all four of these locations and go from one business to the other. And again, you know, Mr. Dillinger, why do you rob casinos? Because that's where the money's at. So hopefully that you'll support the deferral. I'm not sure exactly what we'll do in the couple of weeks, but it definitely deserves a conversation.
All right. All right, see no further comments. Let's take a vote on the motion to defer thirty-five to forty-two.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg? No. Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
No.
All right, that's going to pass five to two. Any other questions for Jamie on any of the remaining items? All right, then I take a motion to approve the remaining items.
I so moved.
Second. Starr. Motion by Sale, seconded by Starr. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Next item, item forty-eight, second reading, deferred for the meeting of Tuesday, August second, twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West Twelve Street and west of South Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District, the Yo Office District, number one-six-six-six-three-dash-twenty-twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Private applicant, Allen Homes Incorporated, Doug Allen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber with Planning and Development Services. The applicant, Doug Allen, is requesting to withdraw this specific application.
All right, thank you, Jason. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Come on up, ma'am. Perfect. It's perfect.
I'm getting used to you guys.
Yeah, right?
I'm Nancy Hayne. I live at five-twenty-five South Mary Jean Avenue. And last time I talked about the safety issues, I'm just saying this in case he changes his mind and suddenly wants to reopen it. So I handed out some handouts about lock-in storage. And I know it's dated, the eighteenth, in two thousand and eighteen. However, this is only four acres, and ours would be eleven point six. And as you know, crime has gone up, like with burglaries in Sioux Falls. If you watch the news. So I just wanted to say that, in case he changes his mind. That's all I want to say.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, anyone else here to speak on this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Shirley Lund, five oh nine South Mary Jean Avenue in Sioux Falls. And I just want to say I really appreciate this move by Doug, by Doug Allen. And if there would be any further development on a similar type of rezoning, we would sure appreciate knowing. And I know there's a whole slew of homes that are already sold in that, single dwelling homes that are already sold in that area that would be right across the street from something like this. And I think those people should be included or aware of that information. And thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right. Counsel, can I get a motion to withdraw this item then?
So moved. Nitzer?
Second call.
Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Cole. Any discussion on this? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item forty-nine, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter one-fifty-seven subdivisions. The Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. Jeffrey Schmidt, representing Planning and Zoning. This is our Planning and Development Services this evening. This was first reading last week, and this is for a subdivision ordinance amendment for shared use paths. Currently, what we have in existing ordinance is a reference to walkways and trails and paths, and so we're consolidating the terminology, the definitions in here, so that it's consistent throughout the ordinance. And we'll be using the terminology for shared use paths, as you can see in the strikeout here. Most of the other information does not change, it's just the terminology. In this one aspect, it was updated recently so that you specifically had to list in the easements what the easements are going to be used for. So I also include that shared use paths would have to be listed in the easements if it was going to be used for that.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-nine tonight? Counsel, questions on this one?
Move approval?
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Counselor Cole. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item fifty, please.
Item fifty, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain property of the city of Sioux Falls surplus and approving gratuitous transfer of real property by gift agreement. Sponsor is the mayor.
Kevin, good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Smith, representing Planning and Development Services. This proposed ordinance and agreement would allow the transfer of land to the Southeastern Development Foundation for the placement of three renovated homes to be moved and sold. And Lynn Keller Forbes from SEDF is not available to be here tonight, but we did do some background checks and recent home sales. So about an average of the last dozen homes that Lynn moved, renovated, and sold were about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars apiece. So we'll give you a flavor of the level of affordability of the homes once they get moved and placed.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty? Counsel, any questions on this one?
Move approval. Sale.
Second. Jensen.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item fifty-one, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by revising Chapter ninety, animals unfowled to allow hobby beekeeping in S-one general institutional and S-two institutional campus PUD districts. Sponsor is council members Nitzer and Cole.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Nitzer.
Thank you. This is a little shorter than last week. Just going to go over a few things. Again, I want to recognize the stakeholders that helped me with this, specifically Augustana University, Tim Olson of the Northwest Iowa Beekeepers Club, Southeast Technical College, and then the assistance of Animal Control and City Attorney. Again, the proposed ordinance allows beekeeping on school campuses, essentially middle school and up. There's no new restrictions on backyard beekeeping. In fact, we've changed a few things where we've made it a little bit easier, just based on experience from Animal Control and just a little bit of cleanup. And as discussed before, there would be a security fence required around hives on campuses and in parks, and that can be waived by Animal Control. Again, that fence is just a fence. It doesn't have to be anything that's elaborate. Benefits are student education, sustainability, university research, and environmental awareness. I do have an amendment that I'm going to propose after discussion last week and some input. We're going to make a slight modification. There was discussion about why are we requiring security fences in certain cases, so what we've done is we've added the open three form, which essentially is a farm. It's a, so it's agricultural. So if somebody has a farm in town and they want to do beekeeping, they would not be required to have a security fence, and that will make all of the forms in which their private property, single-family homes, twin homes, and farms would not be required to have the fence. But in the public setting, a park or a campus, there would be that security fence required. And then the other change that we made was we're dropping the fence that has to be, the distance of the fence from the front of the hive from twenty-five feet to ten feet. Twenty-five feet was found to be, from some research and discussion, excessive, and it just adds costs. And then we're just giving latitude where Animal Control can waive the security fence in the, in the parks and the campuses, because there's, it's always going to be context-specific. You may have a case where there's a beehive out in the middle of a field, and requiring a fence is just not, it's just not a logical thing. And we're going to trust the beekeeper and Animal Control to make that call on the ground. So again, as I discussed, the security fence would only be required in public settings. Talked about where the fence has to be, four feet from the side and the back and ten feet in the front. It can be waived by Animal Control, and then you don't have to have a fence on the private property. And with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty-one tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. Hello again. I am Janay Beecher, biochemistry and German major at Augustana University, and I support this ordinance as it increases our collaboration through the city, business opportunities, and also educational opportunities for the campus and for the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak on this tonight? Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor David O'Hara from Augustana University. I also just want to voice my support for this ordinance and my gratitude for Counselor Nitzer and Counselor Cole for bringing this forward. And of course, to point out that August twentieth is National Honeybee Day, so the timing seems perfect. Thanks.
I thought you'd also point out what a great invoker we had tonight. It's your wife, right? Come on, you missed your shot there. Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? Come on up.
Yeah, I'm Renee Randall. I'm the president of Big Sioux Bee Lovers Bee Club. The Augie students joined this year, and I think we'll be getting Southeast Tech students joining here shortly. Obviously, we support it. We've been doing some community education stuff with the Butterfly House and Good Earth State Park. So I think it's a great thing to have students learn about this. It's an interesting and challenging hobby, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on item fifty-one? All right, look for a motion to approve this item then.
So moved. Nitzer?
Second call.
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Cole. Counselor Nitzer, you have an amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Motion to amend Section ninety, one oh two, sub C, by inserting open three between the and DD, changing twenty-five to ten, and inserting the sentence, "This requirement may be waived by Animal Control before the last sentence."
All right, second to that. Second, second by Counselor Cole. Any discussion on the amendment there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, the amendment passes seven to zero. The main motion is on the floor as amended. Any further changes or discussion on that? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Council members McCorris.
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item fifty-two, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at one hundred East Eighty-Fifth Street from the C-three Community Commercial District to the LW Live Work District, number one-six-seven-one-two-dash-twenty-twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Private applicant, Creston Capital Holdings, Erica Malali.
The applicant here is Erica Malali. The owner is Springdale Development LLC, still located at the northeast corner of East Eighty-Fifth Street and South Minnesota Avenue. It's about four point seven-nine acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicants are looking at constructing two buildings, mixed-use buildings with some retail on the main floor and then some apartments, and then a couple level apartments up, and then keep a little spot of commercial in the southeast corner for a future coffee shop.
All right, thank you, Jason.[1576.02] Anyone from the public here to speak on item 52? Counsel, any questions for Jason on this item?
Move approval.
Second call.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole. That's to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6. Discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 53, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 704 West 28th Street from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 16752-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Private applicant, Sayer Associates, Jeff Bolt.
The applicant here is Jeff Bolt. The owner is Seacog. It's located at 704 West 28th Street. It's about 0.07 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is Seacog's looking at moving an existing single-family home on this vacant lot.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 53? Counsel, you have any questions for Jason on this item? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6.
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion, was that McCorris? Motion by McCorris, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass seven to zero. Next item.
Item 54, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1600 West 7th Street from the S1 General Institutional District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 16753-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Private applicant, Sayer Associates, Jeff Bolt.
The applicant here is Jeff Bolt, and as Kevin indicated earlier, we just transferred that land to Seacog tonight. It's located at 1600 West 7th Street, just south of the Veterans Community Project. It's about 0.8 acres in size. The purpose of that rezoning is the applicant is looking to subdivide that into three lots and then move three houses on, one on each lot.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this one tonight? Any questions here, Counsel?
Move approval.
Second call.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 55, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of Westbrook Drive and east of South Lana Drive to the AG Agriculture District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 16786-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Private applicant, Airheart Griffin and Associates, Damian Grabel.
The applicant here is Damian Grabel. The owner is John Brooke. It's located north of West 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road. It's about 0.042 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is looking at adding that little portion with the existing lot to the east and then constructing a twin home on it.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Counsel, any questions here? Take a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6?
So moved, Nitzer.
Second, McCorris.
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by McCorris. Any discussion? Let's vote on that, please.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 56, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of East Benson Road and east of I-229 from the AG Agriculture and I-1 Light Industrial Districts to the CN Conservation and I-1 Light Industrial Districts, number 16797-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Private applicant, Sioux Falls Development Foundation, Dean Zietzick.
The applicant here is the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. It's located north of East Benson Road and east of I-229. It's about 62.6 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the Army National Guard is looking to construct their training facility and then some associated detention areas.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, you got any questions here? Mr. Mayor, Counsel Starr?
Yes, Mr. Bieber. And because it's I-1 and our current conversation about E-1 or I-1 property and the amount or lack of regulation on this, could we put a stipulation on it that it was for the Army National Guard? And then if it's not for what they're constructing, they could come back and make a zoning change afterwards?
We typically aren't allowed to put those kind of conditions on there. It's usually just uses that are currently allowed. The I-1 is going to be a lot less uses allowed than the I-2. That's what you're you're kind of getting at with that. The I-1 is mostly just light warehousing and light manufacturing, no processing plants, or heavy industrial businesses are allowed.
Thank you.
All right, other questions here for Jason? All right, look for a motion then to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6?
So moved, Sale.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 57, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 4101 South Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, and the LW Live Work Districts, number 16807-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Private applicant, Willitsen Lund Engineering Corp., Eric Willitsen.
The applicant here is Eric Willitsen. The owner is Mike Lammers. This is located southwest 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road. This is about 48 acres of recently annexed-in property within the city. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicants looking to construct some apartment-type uses along Ellis and then some townhomes and single-family as you start moving west.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on item 57 here? Counsel, you got any questions for Jason?
Move approval.
Second call.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6. Not a discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote then.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 58, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of East 69th Street and west of South Tanner Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, number 16813-2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Private applicant, Springdale LLC, Blake Hyde.
The applicant and owner here is Empire Homes. It's located south of East 69th Street and west of South Southeastern Avenue. This is just west of where they're constructing the new Harrisburg Middle School. It's about 16.4 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicants looking to continue to construct a townhome residential development.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, any questions here? All right, look for a motion then to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, September 6?
So moved, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 59, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 016876-2022, Harvest Hills, Southwest Quarter Edition.
Thank you. This is up in the northwest section of town. It's approximately 320 acres just north of McGovern Middle School. So two sections of ground. It's in the Tier One area. It will have Benson on the north, Maple on the south. Based upon our recent ordinance amendment for concept plans, I was able to piece together four, because it's a large tract, 320 acres, four of their concept plans from their preliminary subdivision plan. And I put that arrow, so that's north on your right. So you will have Benson on your far right and Maple on the left. So there's going to be approximately 600 single-family housing units on this development when it gets built out.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you have questions on this one? Counsel Nitzer?
My only question is I'm trying to calibrate. So is it the northeast quadrant of La Mesa and Maple?
Yes, it is.
Right at the corner and then moving eastward towards McGovern, which is on the south side of the road?
Correct. Yes, so what you'll see on the south end of this, which is the east side, is La Mesa.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions on this one? Counsel Nitzer?
So the only other question is, so I mean, obviously, it's all, I can't tell, single-family housing or, you know, lower-density housing. But will that be any sort of driver? For example, I don't know where La Mesa is planned, as an example. It's still a rural section, a little bit north of, you know, the railroad tracks.
Correct. At this point, La Mesa isn't improved yet, or Benson isn't improved. So we'd have to improve both of those roadways. But we do have the southern border improved.
Well, when you say improved, so like north of Maple, La Mesa is gravel. So presumably, they would have to at least do like a rural section asphalt. But I'm talking, is there any plan that the city is going to be coming anytime in the next five years? I don't know that it's ready yet for, you know, an urbanization of La Mesa or that quadrant.
Correct, neither one of those. So we wouldn't be planning in the five years to do La Mesa or Benson. So but they would have to work on having their access to the south onto Maple.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions on this item?
Move approval.
Nitzer?
Second, Sale.
Motion by Nitzer, seconded by Sale. Is there discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass seven to zero. Next item.
Item 60, a resolution of necessity authorizing the commencement of condemnation proceedings for acquisition of real property located at 6100 East Heim Place, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57110, for public use. Sponsor is the mayor.
Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution of necessity regarding a condemnation over on the east side and is associated with the Veterans Parkway Project. The council has done a number of these in the past. Property owner has counsel and is aware that this is on tonight's agenda. This, again, would initiate the process and enable the city to begin the legal component of property acquisition and valuation. Appreciate your support.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, Counsel, can we get a motion on the floor?
Move approval, Sale.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Is there a discussion on this item? Counsel Starr?
Mr. Mayor, I guess my question is just for people who are watching, what is the public use that we're trying to move forward with?
Veterans Parkway.
Okay. Other discussion, Counsel? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote then, please.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 61, notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated July 29, 2022.
All right, Counsel, any new business? Mr. Mayor? Counsel Starr?
Yes, thank you. If I could have a point of personal privilege just to explain what I would like to do. Last week, a citizen came, Renetta Herska, and she missed the public input time for the mowing and the process of being the assessment role. And we had her speak with Mr. Tobias after the meeting. She did talk to Matt and sent me an email and said that she didn't come to an agreement with him on it. So what I would like to do is to start by adding an item under new business to reconsider that item. And then if that passes, add a have the vote on reconsideration with a date of September 6 to actually have the vote to reconsider. So at this point with new business, I would move to add a motion to reconsider the assessment role for mowing to tonight's agenda, obviously under new business.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Thank you. And again, just placing this on the agenda so that we could have a vote to reconsider. This does, with the clerk's advice, take six votes to place it on the agenda as well.
All right, so we have a motion by Starr, seconded by Sale, to reconsider that item from last week. Any other discussion before we vote? We need six votes?
And if I could just make a point of clarification, Mayor, as Counsel Member Starr had mentioned, this just adds it to the agenda. The next step would be would be a motion to reconsider formal action at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Council members, McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
All right, so that passes seven to zero. All right, so that will be on our next agenda.
So now it can be added to this agenda.
Okay.
And so the motion that Councilmember Starr would make now is a motion to reconsider, I believe it's Resolution 90-2022, with formal action deferred until September 6.
Okay. So I would move to reconsider item, or the item number 902022 by the vote that it passed.
Second.
All right, motion by Starr, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Council members McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. All right, so that will be reconsidered at our next meeting?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. All right, any other new business? All right, we'll move to public input, three minutes per person on items we didn't cover earlier in the evening. Anybody here for public input tonight? Come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name's Greg Boris, and I come to unite as a soon-to-be former resident of Sioux Falls. I want to share with you some observations on transportation and present with you some challenges. My full remarks are an email to each of you. First, I want to thank those of you who are new to the council for meeting with me prior to the election so I could share with you my ideas about transportation. My goal tonight is to leave you with some challenges. They're to make Sioux Falls a healthier city, make our entire city accessible by foot and by bicycle, slow the speed of traffic, and budget more dedicated funding to the bicycle and pedestrian facilities in Sioux Falls. First and foremost, we must recognize that we are a city. We're not a small town that existed when my wife and I moved here in 1975. We have designed our community so we are reliant on having a car to get to where we work, play, go to school, and shop. When we moved here, we lived on the east side of town. We had one car. My wife worked out of town. I worked downtown. By necessity, I bicycled to work. There were no bicycle facilities then. There was no transit from the east side of town then. Since that time, biking opportunities have improved. The Greenway Trail for Recreation and beginnings of an on-street bicycling facility, great to see the tunnels that were mentioned tonight, you know, the integration of the street planning is great to see, and we need to keep working in that direction. Still, the design of our streets have contributed to a not-too-healthy situation. The Community Health Status Report paints a really depressing picture. If you haven't read it, do so. We're moving in the wrong direction health-wise as a community. Sioux Falls is known for healthcare. A kid at Sanford one day said, "Hey, this is a castle. Where's the moat?" Well, I present to you that we are surrounded by moats dividing our neighborhoods. These moats are the many arterials. All these streets are dangerous to cross, even at a signalized intersection. And often, one must walk half a mile or more to get to a signal, and I can see my, I've written too much. Our city budget reflects the values of the city, and the proposed budget, only $300,000, is proposed to dedicated funding for bicycle and pedestrian expenditures. I call on you to double the dedicated budget for bikes and pedestrians for each of the next five years.